Good evening, everyone. This meeting, this is the Tuesday, June 13th, 2023 regular meeting of the Bucksboro Planning Board. This meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Oklahoma Public Act. Well, added with an electronic notice that this meeting is provided by way of publication in the 100 county Democratic per year newspapers on or about January 18th, 19th, 2023. In addition, notice that the meeting is posted on the door of the borough of Flemington Municipal Building located here, 38 Park Avenue, have any handicap accessible individuals there too. This is for the municipal website and the municipal authority distributes all persons of any requesting copies of same. This meeting is being recorded with both audio and video and may be rebroadcast. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision and to court appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. So I ask everyone, please rise as you are able for the flag to leave.
The states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one would be shit, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Here, Mr. Zenghar, here, Mr. Campion.
Here.
Mr. Doshan.
Here.
Mr. Levitt.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Ms. Giffen.
Here.
Ms. Weitzman.
Here.
Mr. Hill.
Here.
Mr. Semino.
Here.
Mr. Echol and Mr. Whitehouse are excused. Mr. Schill.
Here.
Ms. Kaczynski, here. Mr. Clarico, here. And Ms. McVennas and Mr. Crapman were excused.
Thank you. Item number one on our agenda this evening, as always, is a time for public comments. Our item is not currently in front of the board. If any member of the public wishes to speak, please raise your hand. Close, please. If you want to sit there, that's perfectly fine.
That's right. I just have neuropathy in my feet, which makes it very hard to know who you are. Um. Play the game according to the rules because I expect you will play the game accordingly. I have come tonight, Jane and I, oh, that was Stuart Springsteen, memory of Flemington. I'm tonight because I want to ask this board for really detailed and extra attention to the things that we can do in this borough to lessen the effects of climate change on our residents and our community. And I'm asking you that any and all applications that come before you, whether it's for something new, a redevelopment, whether it's for a variance, whatever it's for, that you all individually think about how you can make that site in this town better for our community. Certainly, we need more vegetation. We do not need applicants to say, I can't fit all the trees on this property. I'll pay someplace else and put them up in the park. That doesn't help to heat Iowa into fact in this town. We need them where the impervious coverage is to shade that, maybe even take the place of some of the impervious coverage. But we need to have more attention paid to following the rules that we have. We have rules for setback. It's for a reason. It's not just because we think we, it's what we want to do. It's because we need to have places for greenery. So don't give away our setbacks. Don't give away our tree numbers. Don't give away the amount of impervious coverage or whatever all those other technical things are that I really don't understand. But let's, the applicant build something that's really too big for the space they want to put it in. So this board is charged with doing what is best for the community of Flemington Borough. And I'm asking each of you to look very carefully at what can be done when any applicant comes before you. Any, whether it's just for something minor, if there's some way that you can make it better, please, I ask you. And for the people who are looking at the ordinances and all that kind of stuff, perhaps there are some things that you can change so that over on the highway, like for instance, when whoever came into where that restaurant is on the corner of Rayville Avenue and 31202, there aren't any trees there for the number of parking spots in there. But because it's a restaurant taking the place of a restaurant, I'm told, oh, they can't do anything about it. You can do something about it if you have an ordinance that says anytime there's a change in ownership, you have to look at the ordinances and compare. So please, I'm just, I'm tired of roasting in this town because if you ride up and down the streets of Flemington, you will see we are so tree poor, so tree poor. And we need more trees, we need more vegetation, and we need less impervious.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, I will move on. Item two on the agenda, Mayor's comments.
I just want to say thank you to Lois. That was very eloquent and very provocative, and there's a lot of good points there. Our town's definitely seven or eight degrees warmer than two miles out. And in fact, I have been contemplating, looking at the shade tree ordinance and trying to make it a little stronger regarding replacement trees, redevelopment, and things like what you just talked about.
And there's the whole opportunity, Mayor.
It's not a conversation. My, this is my comment, sorry, Lois, it's up later. But I, but I have been contemplating that. I think since you brought this up a couple of weeks ago, to me personally, about a better ordinance on tree cutting. You brought it up here. So I have been contemplating that. And just to also let the planning board know, I am working on putting together a parking committee to look at all kinds of parking issues in the borough that include dealing with traffic in the next two years when Hotel Project opens up and how to manage that traffic. I don't think that there was any kind of real plan put in place when the planning board, I don't think they had the purview to do anything about that. But also long-term issues regarding complaints I've had in town about people with driveways and garages choosing to park on the streets in front of other people's homes and possibly need in the future to bring back parking meters. If we get that busy in town, you know, that would be a grand thing. So just to let you know, I have not appointed anybody yet. There will be somebody from the planning board appointed to it. And I did ask Mr. Engelhardt to serve on behalf of council. There will be another person in council as well, later if you need later, as well as a number of our professionals, including the chief of police and others. So I just wanted to note that. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Item number three, Castle comments.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I was also going to mention the parking committee that the mayor introduced to us at the, our castle meeting last night. I did mention to the mayor that we, as a planning board, had a pretty active committee reviewing this subject in the last couple of years. And she's, I brought that to her attention and she was happy to know it. And I want to make sure that any and all work that we, and data that we gathered is kind of rolled into, at least the beginnings of that other subcommittee, however, however we choose to do it. So she's aware of that and was thankful for that info. I want to send a thank you to our supporting committee, our friends over at the HPC for just a wonderfully successful event. The house tour was fantastic and it really highlighted all of the good things that we talked about in our master plan about our local community and our our want and need to protect and promote our historic buildings. And, and just as a sign of, I mentioned this yesterday, I wanted to personally thank all the both public and private homeowners and building owners because I think, I don't even think they realize how much they impacted the local businesses in town. They really, you know, they, they took money in, in families, local families' pockets, in local businesses. And that was really a huge success. So it was a wonderful day. I hope everybody got a chance to enjoy it. For those of us that have volunteered, we kind of, we kind of wish we could have wandered around somewhere. So we really want to thank everybody for enjoying that day and coming from far. I mean, I talk to people like Redding, Pennsylvania, and it's wonderful. The subcommittee met yesterday, will have an update for you guys later in the agenda. And finally, the candy garden is having an open house, like a grand opening first year. They're building and planting, they're planting, they've been building the last two years on July 1st, 4:07 with, ask for, you know, crafts and kids stuff and grilling and things like that.
Thank you. Item four, HPC comments. Dennis.
We have our next meeting next week, but I just wanted to add to what Susan said. Very successful house tour. Thanks for many of the planning board members that helped out. We sold almost 500 tickets. It was a great success, so really appreciate everyone's support and we're looking forward to doing another one next year.
That's. Okay, item five on our agenda this evening is approval of minutes from the May 23rd, 2023. We think that get, minutes were circulating, I get a motion and a second.
Seven.
Any clarification discussion of minutes?
Karen? Yes. Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Zenghar? Yes. Mr. Campion?
That's A.
Doshan?
Stay.
Mr. Levitt?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Item six this evening is determination for application 2023-02, block 35, block 60, 13 Brown Street. It's a use variance application. And.
Sure, you want, is that going to hurt anything?
So the new, it's for completeness, so I, I mean, do they, are they allowed to sit?
The day is, we, of course.
Right. And obviously, item seven is also a use variance application, so you can trust that this will be a show.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of board, Stephen Grunberg, attorney in Flemington, on behalf of the applicant Douglas Striker. This property is located at 13 Brown Street, block 35, block 60, and it's a vacant parcel in which Mr. Striker would like to have a two-family dwelling, which is a permitted use, but because of the lot size, it requires a density variance, a D5 variance. There's also a pre-existing condition of the lot width, which is 75, 50.01 feet. And the existing lot is 70, the ordinance requirement is 75 feet. So we had Mr. Clarico's initial complete review correspondence, and he pointed out a number of different variances, and we revised our plan to address those variances and some, and providing with some additional information and submitted that. And Mr. Clarico has issued a second completeness review report. I'd just like to point out that this is a use variance application, a Dvariance application, and there is no checklist in the borough for this type of application. So in the municipal land use law, we're required to provide you with a complete application in accordance with your ordinance, but you don't have a checklist requirement for a variance plan. So we feel like we've submitted significant information for you to be able to review this application and that we were able to be deemed complete this evening, just as a matter of law. But we've tried to address all of the issues that were raised in Mr. Clarico's correspondence. If during the public hearing, there's some information that the board would like, we can entertain providing that, but I think we've provided about everything that we need. Subsequent to Mr. Clarico's correspondence of June 9th, we provided the title policy. And I think the only real issues that he had in his report, I don't want to speak for him, but are essentially, we indicated that we would provide proof of the stormwater management as a condition of any approval. And he wanted to see grading plans and actual stormwater management plans. Again, this is not a minor site plan. This is just a use variance application. We think that can be made a condition of approval. We indicate that we're going to comply and we need to comply and show that. But quite frankly, it's a lot of expense to go ahead and do those plans now if the board is going to entertain this application and we would rather make that as a condition of approval. But we can provide more information at the time of the public hearing that we can comply with those standards. And that's about it for completeness. Honestly, I think the board can entertain a motion as being the application complete this evening based upon a lack of a checklist.
So really, you know, usually for checklist issue notwithstanding, I understand what you're saying. We want to make sure that our professionals have what they need in order to, to provide board with reports in order to proceed. So I'm going to ask Mr. Clarico, if there's anything you wanted to add.
I don't know, the letter pretty much spells it out. As Mr. Grunberg said, as, we'd had several of these applications for variances where there's no checklist. So I always kept, you know, I sent my report, I wrote that caveat that we don't have a checklist, but here's what I would recommend. And I believe that the last meeting, the original review on this, I think the board seemed to be incomplete for the noted items. So I'm looking at the revised submission in the context of the board, looked at the April letter and said, yeah, you got to provide that. So I'm updating you on, I'm not adding anything, I'm just giving you an updated status report on where the applicant is. And Mr. Grunberg indicated they, they have, as I noted in the letter, I indicated that I was addressed. The title report has been provided, so that was item two B. The, I mean, it's probably, we think we're getting beyond completeness issues into the discussion issues here, but, you know, one, one of the parameters that I mentioned in the prior report, and again, in the two before, is that this particular use that the applicant has chosen to seek variance from and the parking associated with it drives the issue that they, they have to approach the 50% impervious coverage. We have an ordinance that says if you are approaching trees and surface coverage, you have to show, you have to show, and you can have compliant onsite stormwater management. It's a section, exciting ordinance. And that's what we don't have. The applicant is basically asking you to, and again, so it's going to be kind of the board's, I guess, more of the board's consideration of the variance review. You know, can you consider this kind of request in leave not knowing whether or not, you know, they, they can provide onsite storm. So you're, that's the information you're, as whether there's any ability to put onsite stormwater management on the job and give ground condition, given the the amount of impervious that they're proposing to meet the standards of the ordinance. So it's, it's sort of a related topic. The applicant is indicating that they're asking, Mr. Grunberg just indicated that here the issue of the use for the deficient lot size based on the type of use they're choosing to put forth here and condition any approval on the fact that they will be applying stormwater. And that, I guess, that'll come in, that'll be information that will come up for the board, but come with the administration. Really defer to the board again, we don't have a checklist. That is an issue, there's a few other issues Karen and I have been, Karen and I have been talking about, whether they rise to the level of completion or not. You know, we can discuss or, or not discuss tonight. There was one other issue, and I just stumbled on this actually, tonight, in their first submission, they had parking in the front yard setback area, and I cited that a number, a number of other things, additional variances they would need. They've come back with a plan where they've pushed the parking back, they've beat the front, they've hit the front yard setback, but in remediating the ordinance, we have I think it's terrible, it's, we have conflicting statements in that one section of the ordinance. In one case, once, in one case, it says that you, you can't, you can't have parking in the front yard. We define front yard as distance between, not the front yard setback, which is what I was mistakenly thinking about when I did this enable. But between the building and the street. So we have parking in the front yard here, which technically would literally read the ordinance, it's a variance. There's also other provisions the ordinance says if you can have a parking apron in front of the building, in front of a residential building, which contradicts the fact again, parking in front of the building. So again, I'm, I'm just pointing this out. I didn't, I didn't re-raise it in the June report because they did what I raised in my April report, that they moved it back 25 feet. But that's really not what the ordinance says. So I think the applicant may be filing this, maybe want to, maybe want to ask for a clarification or interpretation or something with the board to deal with that aspect of it. Because that's presented, it, it doesn't read that aspect of the ordinance either.
So I think the main threshold question is, are all of the items outlined on whatever checklist the board has, the application, been submitted? That's what this board needs to decide. There are some other questions, there are some other things Bob and I have been kicking around. We can certainly discuss that with Mr. Grunberg, present it to the board if necessary for determination. But that's, that's the question that you have to decide on both of these allegations. So I guess if, if what you're saying is what's included in the checklist has been submitted and.
There is no checklist.
Checklist, there may be.
Again, they, they, I responded back based on the, on the suggestions I made back in the book. That's, that's the template, Bob.
So, so just so we get a support discussion, is there a motion to deem it complete? And then we can have discussion.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. When I look at your letter, J and number four say not addressed. Is that not addressed by you, not addressed by?
Oh, I'm just saying it's a status, they, they, you can provide a copy of the, I didn't have it with the original submission. They're indicating they filed a certification on payment taxes.
Okay.
In the subsequent submission, he provided an update. Again, I can only review what I get. I didn't get it, I just, that's why, that's why I listed it in the April letter.
So because, because I'd be happy to make a motion, I just want to make sure that I understand what you were referring to as the larger issue would be the trigger of the impervious coverage on stormwater management. But again, that's. Outside of the checklist, there are lack thereof, right? That, that is the biggest issue.
Is there a second? Thank you. So now we can have discussion. Is, is, are there other, do word members have thoughts, things that you need Bob or Karen to clarify?
I think the question, the applicant, would you actually show up at the hearing with the ability to answer some of the stormwater?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, we hear what the board's saying, and you know, I, I don't know if we can provide testing, but soil testing and all of that, but we'll, we'll come with an idea of what type of stormwater management.
On whatever laws in place at that time.
Yeah.
Right. Anybody else?
I, I had a question. Can you hear me?
Yes, Dennis, please.
Did they submit a new design of the building? I have the original one, but in what I read, they're removing the garages. And so I was wondering, is there a submission of what that would look like? Because the HPC would need to comment too.
We need to submit a revised plan to address some of those anticipated issues. So we did present revised architectures.
I did not receive an O and R file. So I had some, there's some copies. It was, I think it was received here on a Thursday. Yeah, and I think it was received on Thursday, last Thursday, so I didn't have time to mail them or.
Was it?
Yes, it was submitted to the, to this office and to office office.
So if we can get an electronic copy, that would be, myself, thank you. Okay. Any other board questions or discussion?
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Mr. Doshan?
Yes.
Mr. Levitt?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen? And Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
All right, it's easier, we try to think about scheduling hearings and things like that. So obviously, this is a use application, so I'm not, we want to make sure we have a full board for you. We have some stuff that needs to get submitted. We've got notice, we've got other things.
The next, I would say, would be July 11th, maybe 27th. And then the July meetings are the 11th and 25th.
So I'm, he's going to talk to the applicants, but the 11th and the 25th, I'm, I'm looking at our board professionals. Yes.
That's fine, the question is.
Not check, it was, we'll figure out.
That's all right.
So is there anybody on the board who will not be here the 11th or 25th? Plan vacation, trips down the street.
They're not. Possibly they're trying to, but I will ask either of them or.
So while I'm looking to, it's okay on this one, on the other one, if we're deemed complete, I want to talk to you about making June 27th.
Okay, well, that's a different one, let's get there then, but I'm just raising that up higher. So let's, let's tentatively schedule this for July 11th and, and we'll circle back with professionals and make sure everything is there. The one, the one, the matter that we, we, we're going to raise this now, and I'm going to raise this now for the record, and then we'll talk about it under chair items. Our words, the board's planner, Beth Vanis, her whole firm has a conflict on, on both this and the next application support for the applicant of the striker. So we need to get another planner to be able, we don't have a backup planner. We have some names, we have some ideas, but Karen, we'll talk about them under chair items. So that's my only, that's, I'm just putting that out there, that the 11th is not going to be a problem for somebody to, to do it. Where it's on us to cover that, I understand, but well, I'm just, conduct to that issue.
Understood.
Okay. All right then, so that's scheduled. Our next item on the agenda is number seven, other completeness determination for application 2023-03, block 7, block 5, 53 East Main Street. A use variance application as well.
Stephen Grunberg, attorney, is still here for Douglas Striker. And this is our application for Bush's old office and residence that's located at 53 East Main Street. It's located in the transition commercial zoning district, just block 7, lot 5. Since our application with the use variance relief to allow for, let me back up. Mr. Bush had his professional office on the first floor and his residence on, and a residence on the second floor. But it was limited to a lawyer's office. It wasn't limited to professional offices or anything. It's limited specifically in the resolution that approved that to a lawyer's office. We would like to amend that essentially, to have professional offices under the same terms and conditions as the prior resolution. So it could be an accountant, or it could be another type of professional business in the same zone, not just limited to a lawyer. We also are requesting the ability to be able to either have a barbershop or a hair salon in that space on the first floor under the same type of uses. Each one of those uses is a permitted use in the zone. It's just the fact that the residence is on the second floor and the business would be on the first floor, which triggers the use variance relief. So we're not proposing to change anything in terms of the site. There's existing parking, there's existing lighting, it's been functioning that way for a long time. And so our application here is for the. the devariance approval to allow those type of uses instead of just limited to the lawyer's office use. So my same argument in terms of it's the checklist requirement, it, um, applies to this application as well, but we did provide you with an as-built survey to show you exactly what's there and how it's being used. So it's, and it's an updated survey. Um, Mr. Clereto raised an issue in his, um, report as to whether we require site plan approval, minor site plan approval. Um, and I provided the board with correspondence today, um, where I think that we are exempt from minor site plan approval under section two-eight-zero-eight, um, E of your ordinance, because we're not resulting in additional loss coverage. We will not re-increase the number of required off-street parking. We'll conform to the maximum and minimum standards because we're not changing anything. And it's not, uh, proposed in conjunction with a conditional use permit. So under these circumstances, I don't think we require minor site plan approval because we're not changing anything. Um, but we've given you a survey showing what's going on, on the property. Um, I think Mr. Clereto in his report also raised the issue of a floor plan. Again, we're not changing anything. That might be something that the board can request of us for more information as to what's going on on the first floor um, in the barber shopper hairdresser type situation, um, that we can provide with you at the time of the, the meeting. But it's not something that I really think that the board can deem us incomplete on at this point because we're providing you with what the site looks like and what the proposed uses are. So we would ask to be deemed complete on this application and scheduled for public hearing.
Kara, can you speak to a legal question? Because I think that's the first thing we should go through.
You're talking about the legal question and the essential.
Yeah, exempt from side.
You've heard Mr. Grunberg's on to that issue. I'm sorry. Thank you, Lois. Uh, you've heard Mr. Grunberg's, uh, comment with regard to that issue. Um, Bob may want to speak as well, but certainly if the board feels that those requirements are met, we're ten to. Who was not required for this. Um, there are four items. Uh, the only one that I think may be at issue, and again, I'm not going to speak for Bob, but maybe, um, not increasing the number of required off-street parking or loading spaces. Um, we did look, uh, very briefly at the ordinances immediately prior to the meeting and it appears that there is no specific requirement for the barber shop beauty type of use. Uh, we have the RSIS for the apartment. We have the office use. Um, that seems to be the only one that there's a question about. So that would be the, the, you know, issue.
Sorry, I'm going to make sure I come back. That barber lease does not speak to parking minimum for a barber shop. It does, RSIS kicks into the residential.
And we do have office.
And we have office use. That other use doesn't have anything.
Now, what, what the board could do without having that specific information, um, is indicate that, uh, we would deem the application complete with the understanding that as testimony came forward and we looked uses and the number of employees and this and that, the board can ultimately make a determination that they would need to see additional information. Uh, or ask for the addition prior to the determination to whether, uh, they necessarily. That we don't have guidance on that issue. That's, and that's the problem because a testimony may be required.
Oh, is there anything I have? Uh, no, I, I looked at this maybe a little subensively when I did this originally. This, what is out there today is the result of the site. If I looked at this as an amendment to a site, that's essentially what it is. Um, what Mr. Grunberg is citing is pretty big ordinance that citing as a, as an exemption from the site. So again, it kind of updated boards. And the applicant did a very nice job of putting together a lot of information. I just looked, again, I looked at the checklist for minor site plan. Just noted the, the few things that, that, that aren't here. Um, um, again, this is another one. I didn't get proof on payment of taxes. I'm assuming that's been submitted.
We submitted it with the, while looking at the, we may not have given you the updated one, but we can, yeah, that, whatever we do when we file it.
We weren't able to, as, as part of their submission, um, I guess to a, to a Oprah request, uh, full copies of the minutes from the, we're going back to nineteen eighty-eight, nineteen eighty-nine. To ascertain what, whether some of the conditions that were proposed when this was officially approved. Um, and again, the board will have to listen to testimony on that, make that consideration. Of that, I think, aspect of this, which is, again, it's the residential use. Um, and I'm believing in their outlining, must have changed the representation. Well, this is still going to be an owner occupied office use, albeit not sort of a law, a law office.
Correct.
And there's going to be a supplemental rental unit in there for a beauty or barber shop. Uh, there is no floor plan to show how they're, how they're breaking this up, how they access into the building.
Let me just back up. It's, it's not, it's an either or. It's not going to be a law office or a professional office and a barber shop and a beauty. It's, it's. It's, it's a permitted use on the first floor, either a professional office or a barber shop or a hairdresser type thing.
Okay.
So, so it's not an intensification of what's going on there. We. Then I apologize if it wasn't clear, but it, it's an, it's an order thing. It's not.
We want to do essentially the same thing, but limit to a professional's office and beauty and barber shop uses. So I guess one of those.
This is where the comments, well, you're, you're going to. You're going to be, I think, as part of the, again, there's no archaic standard for, for, for a barber shop office, but there is nothing for the, uh, uh, and when this was done originally, there was limitations put on the office use of how many employees to it. The owner, the attorney had to live there and it could only be two additional employees. And in some way, shape or form, they established the number of parking that needed for that use. In, in nineteen eighty-nine. You're going to need to hear testimony and probably get some input on what parking demand is for a barber shop or beauty salon. You have to hear about employees. You're going to have to hear hours of operations. You're going to have to hear a lot of stuff to know whether this, this is inadequate.
But if it's just not proposing any changes, they would have to provide testimony that what's here is adequate. And if it's not, then we would, you know, that's, that's, then that's, then it would be the question about site.
Yeah, the other part, again, is the other part is that the use they're talking about is permitted use. It's the residents in here that's driving the variance, as it did back in nineteen eighty-nine. Then.
Say that again slowly so that we all heard that. The, the, the variance is not being driven by the fact that they want to put a permitted use on the first floor. The variance is being driven by the fact that there's a rest, that there's a residence on the second floor.
Yeah. And you're tying that residence to whoever's going on a break. The barber's going to live upstairs.
This is a, a small, looks like a residential structure, or less. And it's on, it's on, you know, East Main Street. So, um, I think the board in the past recognized for Mr. Bush that he wanted to live upstairs and have his professional office downstairs. And it was him and two employees. So we're essentially proposing the same type of use, either a professional office, not limited to a lawyer, or maybe somebody wants to live upstairs and be able to do a hairdressing with one or two chairs or a barber shop with one or two chairs. We'll provide, I said one or two. I, I have to give you more testimony about it at the public hearing. But that's generally the idea of what we're proposing here. Permitted uses, but not limited to a lawyer's office.
This would almost be, well, not, again, it, it doesn't be almost like a changing use. Again, it's the residents that's driving the variance aspect though.
Which is not changing.
No, which is not changing. But, well, it was approved before under certain circumstances. They're changing it. Approved. So, yeah, it is changing. But, um, so, and whether the applicant files an application for site plan or not, you're going to be discussing site plan issues as part of this.
Right. Okay. So it sounds like the applicant is prepared to give some testimony at a public hearing about what that would look like. And Kara, you're saying that we could make a determination at, at some point that we need a site plan, that, that we need minor site plan, that what's been presented to trigger, like, so we could do that down at that point.
Right. At this time, you continue the application based upon the information that the applicant has presented to you with the understanding that based upon testimony, if it seems like there is a parking issue or it seems like for some reason there would be site that approved, required additional information necessary for the request.
Okay.
And I pointed out in the report, you're, there is a distinct notification that has been made from the nineteen eighty-nine site to what's out there today. Essentially relates to driveway. Uh, when this was approved in eighty-nine, uh, the driveway was a separate, there's an adjoining residential property that has a driveway. In nineteen eighty-nine, when this was done, there was like a foot and a half separation between the driveways. At some point in time, I don't know when, where, or why, but at some point in time, you go out there today, it's one big driveway. Um, so you actually use the neighbor's property. There's nothing to prevent you from using the neighbor's property for ingress and egress. And the driveway that's out here is substandard in terms of the two-way driveway was approved as a one-way, you know, a one-way driveway. So we're, we're going to get into site plan discussion on issues as, as part of this, whether we like it or not, if we possess it. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just pointing.
All right. So it sounds somewhat, Kara is saying that, um, i- is there someone willing, uh, we make a motion to deem it complete with this understanding that we made through the course of testimony provided in the public hearing way into these site plan issues and determined that we actually do need to see a minor site plan. And that's the, that's the kind of where we're at. I'll move that with the exact language that Kara came up with.
Yeah, Cook second.
All right. Are there other questions from members of the board or discussion?
Final, not so much, just a point. My concern would just be if they really wanted to be in a barber shop, but that would even more definitely be a set back. I'm thinking of the additional water usage or air requirements that are involved in that, which is different than like a office space.
I, I don't want to get too much into that because I'm going to hear, you know, absolutely. It's completely valid. And I think possibly, I, I don't know what the applicant's intentions are as far as when they would know that decision, but if they're asking the board to approve either or in connection with this, any questions you may have with regard to either of those uses will become relevant or anything.
I guess what I'm trying to suggest to the applicant is that if that is more than likely to be the way they want it to happen to be used, better to have a minor site plan early on rather than delay the process and we get partly down the road and then ask for it.
I guess my thought is that we've essentially given you what a minor site plan is, which is the as-built of what's there now. Um, so what we haven't filed for is an application fee and the actual application for it. And there might be additional things in the site plan application or, or site plan checklist that might be, but essentially what is on site is what we're proposing. That's.
But those items of, of, uh, lighting landscaping, uh, 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 stormwater, there, there, that would be on this, this, the minor checklist that are not, all, all of those items are not on the as-built survey drawing. A lot more, but not all. And so, so I, I think that if testimony can be given that might hit on those items during the hearing to address some of those concerns, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. That, that I understand. Okay.
Other board discussion questions?
Okay. Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Dasha?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Okay. So I understand that you want to schedule this for the twenty-seventh. Here is our concern is that we need to find a plan. And because we're talking about a use applicable from here. But the board will absolutely need to have a planner weigh in on, on this. So my, my, my real concern is promising you that we're going to be ready to do that on the twenty-seventh and not being ready to do that.
Um, and we can meet notice requirements from the twenty-seventh.
I'd have to do it on the deal.
Also, Chad, we also need a full vote because I don't know if they will vote on that.
Well, we have alternates. So, um, so it is, it is a, it is a zone work adjustment matter. So, um, so if Karen's not here, just want to make sure we have at least one of our alternates available. So, Anna, are you raising a hand or? No, you're good. Okay. So now she's a regular. I know that's why I thought she wasn't. So, so, so are you going to be your line on the twenty-seventh?
So I think our alternative is going to be, so I'm, I'm okay with it. We have a whole board.
Yes. We have other alternatives as well, but as long as I know.
We haven't given you enough time to get a planner.
Okay.
Why would we do July eleventh?
July eleventh. Okay.
That's not what we have both.
Both on to the one night. And I think, I think that given what we're talking about, I think that's fine.
No, we want to, you know, yeah, not push. If you need to get it.
And, and again, I appreciate your willingness. Yep. Okay. So, um, the plan is to have two and oh-three on July eleventh.
Very, very much.
Thank you. All right. Item eight on our agenda this evening is our, uh, couple of things. One is our next meeting, which is June twenty-seventh. Um, we have, uh, we have, um, the announced continuation of Spice Factory.
True. We have not seen any kind of revised plans, uh, at this point, and they really need to be invited. I think the minimum ten days would be this Friday.
So I did have a brief conversation with, with their attorney, with Mr. Grunberg before the meeting, and he is pushing them to get there, but he doesn't. So he, he doesn't know if that's going to happen or not, but I think that what's, I, I think that, not to represent him, but I think that, um, it's on the agenda. It's continued there. There, they may need to refile. They may need to, we're definitely going to have to reopen the public hearing at some for them to put at least some testimony on the record. So, um, so that's.
If we have to give an announcement to.
Yeah, and whether it's going to carry, whether we're going to carry it or renotice or whatever, that's something we'll figure out at the next meeting. So that's on the agenda. Um, what else do we have on the twenty-seventh?
That's it.
That's it.
Subcommittees.
Subcommittees. All right. So, um, we did get an update from Brett Harris earlier, uh, today on the, um, ordinance subcommittee. So it looks like, um, the PO district, uh, the PO district, uh, ordinance might be ready for us to take a look at. Mike, is that, would that be on the twenty-seventh?
Well, that's, I, I was thinking as you guys were talking that you might, you know, you may or may not have a type meeting that might be a good opportunity to review it.
I would say if we can, because it does sound like Spice Factory will be relatively short, that we, that we can try to get that in. We can, if we can get that for the twenty-seventh, that would be great. Because if not, we have two applications on July eleventh that we might want to, and then I, I wouldn't want to put that on that meeting as well. I would want us to maybe have to hold that a little bit. So that would be my thought. What else? Um, the other one is rules of citizen input.
At the last meeting, we had a brief discussion about this. There was one comment, um, suggestion, discussion point that was made regarding the rules, and that was basically the ability of, uh, any board member to make a recommendation, uh, with regard to any particular technical public that might be creating issues. As opposed to just the chair. Um, that was the discussion point. Um, I know you are here. We had a full board. We were to bring that to a discussion for the meeting. Here we are. Other than that, um, that was really the only point that was brought up. Unless anybody has any thoughts since we.
Could you elaborate on that? So I had to get another.
Yeah. So right now, Lois, our rules of citizen input provides for the ability of the chair among his other, uh, roles and abilities to um, indicate if a member of the public is being unruly, um, just basically, uh, fulfill his and or her responsibility to make sure that there's a orderly meeting, uh, amongst that, all of the board members, but also public. Uh, and the question is whether or not. Uh, and the question is whether or not any board member should be able to make a recommendation that certainly actually be taken based upon what's going on in the room. I think that's probably the easiest way to put it.
There was no discussion, um, citizen, there was no discussion about the timeframe? I had asked for consideration of that.
Yeah, understood. Um, that certainly is, is something that could be discussed, but, um, that was not the issue that came up at the last meeting.
I would ask that of the next one.
So are we, um, is the committee ready to, are there changes that are being proposed?
That was.
That only, it was the only one that, um, and being that you as the chair weren't here, and it was sort of, you know, the entity of the chair saying that it is your responsibility to govern the meeting and, um, and be able to say, again, it's, it's very easy to talk about now, but I'm talking about when you have somebody belligerent and screaming at the, you know, can somebody else say, excuse me, Chair, that person needs to go. Um, and that really was the conversation.
So, I mean, I.
I was looking at Kara.
Did I?
See, I'm trying to, it seems reasonable. I mean, it's in his real state.
That, I mean, I. It's fine. I mean, whoever decides to, to, to sit in the, in the chairperson's role is taking on the responsibility of running the meeting and, but you're right, sometimes having a backup isn't the worst idea of the world, but it's fine. I hope there's a objection there. But that was the only thing that you're saying.
That was the only thing that came up. I have a note here where I think we probably talked about, um, when we have people coming and asking questions or making comments in the public that, you know, sometimes the ask and answer comment is helpful, shows that it could be fit into somewhere in the document itself. But that was really the, the main discussion point.
Okay. So then if that, if that's the case, then perhaps we could, um, either for the twenty-seventh or if we need more time, push it to the second meeting in July to come back, actually, let's do the, do the second meeting in July to come back with, with any proposed changes. And if, if the committee could, um, circulate them to the board ahead of meetings, everyone has a chance to look at it and then have, and have a conversation, that would probably be useful.
So just to clarify, changes with regard to that issue of any member of the board making a recommendation and put in some sort of red line language with regard to the answer.
Yeah. And, and, yeah, red line copy so we can see the, the proposed changes on one side. Okay, good. Um, other chair item, and, and this was, this was, this was brought up, it's a persistent thing, but I'm going to ask. We have our ordinance review subcommittee that's been working on stuff, and I know you're working on implementing stuff from the master plan recommendations. PO district, TC district, the overlay, BAS, all sorts of good stuff, and I don't want that to get detracted. But we also, as we've heard this evening and have heard before, we don't have a checklist for a use variance, and it would be useful to have a checklist for use variance. I know we've had, we've run into this before, we've run into this before. We also need to update the checklist for things like, we don't need twenty-five bar copies and, you know, those other kinds of things, and we can pull that together. So I'm going to ask, is there a way we could, it doesn't have to be that subcommittee, I, I think, but, but we do need, sooner than later, we've been talking about it for a long time, and sooner than later, I'd like for us to be in a position to propose to governing body based on our lived experience in the board all these years. Here are tweaks we need to make for a major and minor site plan checklist. And here's, we need to come up with something for, uh, a variance-only kind of, um, application. I know Bob pulled some examples together from other jurisdictions. We've been talking about this for too long, so I, my first actually, yeah.
Can I, can I say something? Because I, I have no idea you're going to bring this up tonight.
Yeah.
And I, I happened to come across a checklist the other day, and I had, I actually was going to talk to you about it after this meeting. Like, we need to update our checklist, so I'll give this Bob as another example, but more importantly, I just want to warn everybody, and anybody is volunteering for this committee, we've tried to do this before, and it's not easy, because you start diving into the checklist and you're like, but we need that, and we need that, so it's not an easy task.
We've, we've done it enough.
Yeah. We got it better. It, it's not as easy as it sounds.
Just want to make a touch of general comment. I mean, anything that the board feels it needs to make a decision can always be provided. We know that. Um, there's a lot of towns, maybe even some of the ones that, that Bob has here that has an extremely detailed checklist that takes four, five, six months to comply with to get before board. Um, so I'm just, not, whatever you want to proceed, whatever you want to do, whatever your goals are, that'd be that up to you, but I'm just saying that we're not as bad as we. I'm saying, I know.
There's, there's other things that, okay, so for example, having twenty-five physical copies of everything is an expense to applicants and it's traffic, it will absolutely, for a, you know, a smaller application, be an impediment to somebody improving a property or to making an investment in town. We want to avoid that, especially since we all, a lot of us are dealing with stuff electronically, and we kind of came up with a number, we only need twenty-five, we need like seven or five, or whatever it is. Like, we, we already had conversations with DBW and Warren who can share a physical copy. We need a hard copy.
HBC is, HBC is digital.
The other things are. Digital, whatever we talked about, they, we needed, we obviously need a hard copy here in Borough Hall for inspection, and Bob likes to have a copy, you know. Like, I understand that, like, that, that's something that is a checklist item, and it's different than getting down into the weeds of what level of detail we need for stormwater, right? Those are different things.
Or, or, or all the checklist, and, and, and this, actually, I developed this for a number of years ago, it's been used in several towns. It's not copy related, so.
Right.
And, you know, you could, obviously, then what goes in it, it's up, up every town school, right? So there might be some things in here, I haven't, the last one I happened to do was for a town, but, you know, is tailored to what they require, you know, for them. What I like about it is that it's, it's simplistic in that, uh, it, it tells you what you need to file with the application and what needs to be on the plan. It has a provision in here, the applicant's telling you whether he provided it, or whether he feels it's not applicable, or whether he's asking for a waiver. And it's also another element that lets me circulate this by saying that, yep, it's provided, no, it's not provided, they ask for a waiver, yes, we're recommending a waiver. Yeah. Uh, actually, I've done these, if, if an applicant does this properly, and it's submitted properly, I can do a complete report in one page. Right? Send a copy, the checklist tells you, I don't have to go into a lot of burgers telling you, they didn't give you this, and I, you know. So it's, it's, it's nice in that way, it's, it's user-friendly. What you want to put in, how you want to populate it, fill it in, it's really kind of up to you. Uh, but, but, I'm sorry.
I don't know, please.
No, I, I said, it's, 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 you know, it's, 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 I, it's, and it covers every type of application too. Right? So it, it, and, and listen, if, 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 if anything is not required for that application, it's not checked. Well.
I will say, I've used that checklist with Bob on the other side on behalf of applicants. It is very, the, the format of this is very user-friendly and can be easily tailored to what it is that you may want to see upfront versus what you may be willing to waive versus what you may want to make determination about later on. Um, but that, that format is, is definitely very user-friendly, it's, it's easy to understand from the board, the applicants, and, yeah.
I mean, I don't think we need to committee on this as much as we need just to make sure this happens. And I'm happy to work with the board's professionals just directly and then see if we can get this thing going forward, unless there's someone who's clamoring to get, to do this. And this, this, if you, if you thought, if you thought the bylaws was.
Yeah. I mean, may, maybe it's just a matter of, you know, changing the, the header and the information submitted and say, hey, everybody take a look at it, we need to.
So.
We don't. Or you take, you know, however it is.
All right. So let's, that's what we're going to proceed. I have a word.
And you guys.
So, I don't want to be worse. Let me move on. We get to a meeting probably when there's not much else going on, so we have a chance to look at it, and we'll move it into council, and we'll get it adopted into ordinance. And that's, again, we're trying to close, finish stuff that's halfway done. We'll get it, get it there. Okay, good. Anything else under chair items? I do want to thank Trent for chairing in my absence, uh, last meeting.
It was great.
All right. Well, I have the gavel. Um, anything else under chair items?
He said you want to talk about the planner.
Oh, God, sorry. Thank you. Thank you. Um, we need a planner. All right. So it's, Kara and I were talking about this when Beth told us, when Beth saw that Stryker was the applicant, she's like, ah, our, our firm is conflicted out, and we need a, what we need actually is a backup planner. We need to have somebody who we sign a limited agreement with, that in the case of conflict, that we have somebody that we could always, a friend we could go to. Um, the, you know, we, and, and, you know, that's, and that's essentially what we need to do.
Maybe go for professionals.
Can I, because you have here.
Yeah.
It doesn't, Remington have a planner on board? I'm sure they, like, why don't we go to one of the professionals that has, or, I mean, I don't know, just maybe they have a, they have a planner on?
Yeah.
So why don't, why, why don't we go with, why don't we at least, for this application, at least go with somebody that we already have a contract with, that has a planner on board, like Vanquely, like, like Remington? Because we already have a, we already, that way, Gilhans has got, like, it just makes sense. Are there any other, I mean, we could ask them for a, for an hourly rate.
So that's, that's what I'm going to ask for.
You know?
So I don't know Remington, so Susan, I ask.
I can follow up with them.
So if we could get, just if we could get a, if we could get a, um, just a, a per hour rate as a backup planner, and we try to save that on top.
You know, like, and things that you would give us an hourly.
Get an hourly rate on all shirts.
A quick.
Resume. Resume, get an, an hourly rate. And that's here, I think it's not the worst idea for us to think about this as, as a big thing, but in the short term, um, you know, let's, let's just get this.
I mean, hold a plan, I, I don't, I don't, I'm going to jury itself, but I have a plan, so if something came up.
I wanted to talk about things today with you doing these two, because I knew that you had the background, but I, for the benefit of the board, it's sometimes easier to hear planning testimony from someone different than the engineer. We've had, we've had applicants come in who are engineers who are planners, and sometimes it's a little confusing, it's sort of what questions they're asking, what testimony they're giving. I, I would just prefer us to have a different, you know, it's the same firm with a different voice, that I think is useful.
And it's not a conflict for us to have the same company doing two things as I'm.
No. I'm sure you would have sent something.
Yeah. I mean, over the years, you've actually covered a few times for some minor planning stuff when, when, you know, like, when there's a minor thing, but this isn't that minor.
So here's what I'd like for us to do then, is a chair item on meeting on the twenty-seventh. We need to have before then a resume and vote for, for a planner for Vanquely, planner for Nottingham, and the board will then look at it, and the board will take a vote at the meeting on the twenty-seventh to appoint, um, as a backup planner. Um, I think we should, does that need to be by resolution?
Uh, yeah.
All right. So maybe if we just have a resolution ready to go.
So that would be executive session.
It'd be executive session.
Coming back down.
Executive session. Um, and, uh, this is personnel, and, um, and then that way we can, you know, have a, enough time for the July eleventh.
We're contracting this in office.
Yeah. Sorry.
If I, if, I could recommend that whoever is submitting, I mean, it sounds obvious, but just say it, whoever's going to be submitting, make sure they're available in July.
Yes, that would be good.
July eleventh.
July eleventh. Good. July eleventh, and no conflict with, uh, the structure and resume and fees. Yes. All right. Sorry, I'm still brainstorm vacation, other guests. All right. Not so good. All right. Good. We have a planner.
I do know another planner who's very good, um, independent, if you want. Paul Ritchie? Oh, there's Paul. Yeah. He's very good. Um, I could see if he's available, too, just get us three. You know?
Good. I mean, we could, I mean, there's, there's planners in town, but those.
It's not going to come up very often.
I would, I would, I would ask.
No, that was, that was not the point, we said that would be easy, so.
Yeah. I would ask if she was still working at the fancy. Um, yeah, let's try, let's try to keep it like as close as possible. I don't, I mean, the contract issue and getting people paid is compelling to stick with somebody who brings out a really relationship with them.
Yeah.
And a normal three is better, for sure.
I'm just thinking, we need a quick.
Obviously, we do have.
I'm sure.
We do have.
We do have CCH because of John Hatch.
Oh, yeah.
So we, no, CCH was.
Only answer I have is, these will be presented to HBC.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. It's a positive, we don't want to do that. Never mind. Yep. Okay. It's a good point.